Should we all just stare at you?
Yeah.
Just stare at you. You've only been chairman for what, like eight years now or something?
I think it's like...
What was it? Tenth year on the commission, because I'm nine.
Right.
And you were one year ahead of me.
Welcome to this planning commission. The date is Monday through ninth. While everyone please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance, we apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The first item of tonight's agenda is actual approval of agenda. I just want to make one notice that I noticed on here.
With the difference between tonight's agenda and the letter of transmittal, just so everyone knows, that I believe D and E were transcribed differently on the agenda than the letter of transmittal. I don't think it's an issue, but I just wanted to point that out. So I'll be going after the yellow sheet, the actual agenda for tonight, just so everyone knows what's going on. Okay? So with that being said, I'll take, if there's any other changes for the agenda for tonight. If not, we'll do an approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on would be approval for the minutes for the May 12th, 2014 meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made? Okay.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? I need to, Julie, I was not here, so I need to abstain.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll go into our public hearings. The first agenda for public hearing is variance 2013-10. The location of the project is 6640 Shady Oak Road, and the request is to permit 176-foot building identification wall sign on the north elevation, to permit 176-square-foot building identification wall sign on the south elevation, and to permit a 50-foot square foot, I'm sorry, to permit a 50-square-foot building identification wall sign on the east elevation. City code permits one building identification wall sign per wall, street frontage, not to exceed 50 square feet. And I understand that this is a continuance from the February 10th, 2014 meeting. With that being said, will the proponent of the project please come forward? You can tell us a little bit about your project yet again, and we will go from there. Thank you.
Yep. My name is Gary Pillstrom. I'm one of the attorneys for Central Bank, the major tenant in this building. The original request was to permit two 176-square-foot building identification signs for Central Bank and a 50-square-foot sign for another tenant of the building, Aerotech. At the suggestion of the planning commission, we met with city planners, the landlord, and reached a compromise. Central Bank is willing to remove its existing logo on the building, which would reduce the size to 112.5 square foot each for its signs, and apparently, I can't speak for Aerotech, but according to the information I've received, that Aerotech has also agreed to remove the logo from their proposed sign, reducing it to 31 square feet. So we're requesting approval of the variance as modified.
Very good. If we have any questions, we'll let you know. Thank you very much. Um, city staff, Julie, would you like to take a staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as the... Sorry. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as the proponent stated, both parties have reached a compromise. The compromise that they have before you is less than the square footage that was approved with the 1986 variance that was in place, place, rather. The variance does meet the three-part test. Staff is recommending approval subject to the final order that is before you this evening.
Very good. Thank you very much. Before we go out to the audience, commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns about this? Not seeing any? Yeah.
Just happy to see a good discussion, interaction, and working towards what looks to me on the surface to be a pretty good compromise.
I agree. It's nice to finally get this done, too. Seeing how this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns about this specific project? Not seeing any. With that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, before we do a motion?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Just have a couple of questions for staff.
You bet.
One of the concerns that precipitated my comments when this was actually in a public hearing was looking at the ordinance itself and seeing if we need to bring this ordinance into a standing of taller, because we're now looking at taller structures in the areas of the redevelopment and the development areas. So has that conversation been at a staff level, and are we looking towards maybe modifying the ordinance? Because one wall sign per wall, not to exceed 50 square feet, is kind of small, given the nature of the taller buildings that we're now building.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff has begun discussions about a TOD ordinance or Transit Oriented Development Ordinance that would address a lot of the redevelopment that the city will expect as development, redevelopment moves forward along the LRT corridor, should that come to be. So signage eventually would be a part of that discussion, but there are no specific proposals at this point.
Yeah, just so I know that it will be discussed in the TOD areas and the transit development areas.
That's good. Okay. Thanks. Good question. Anybody else before we move on to a motion? Okay, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, move to recommend approval of final order 2013-10.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. You move forward. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next item on tonight's agenda is variance 2014-03. The location of the project is 6355 Point Chase Road. The request is to permit a freestanding sign zero feet from the front property line. City code requires a 15-foot minimum front yard setback in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. With that being said, will the proponent of the project please come forward, state your names, spell your last name for city record, and tell us a little bit about your project, please? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sherri King, K-I-N-G. I'm from Lawrence Sign, and I'm representing Super America. Due to the Shady Oak Road revisions, um...
Can you move those microphones just right in front of you, so we can hear you a little bit better? Thank you very much.
Thank you. With the Shady Oak Road redevelopment, we're proposing to relocate the existing pylon sign with a zero feet setback from the property line. Due to the road reconstruction, the sign in its current location is encroaching on the public right-of-way, making it non-conforming. Not proposing to change the height or the size of the pylon cabinet, so moving it to this new location would make it conforming with the city code.
Okay. Thank you very much. If we have any other further questions, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Julie, staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as the proponent stated, this request is a result of the Shady Oak Road improvements that were done. Additional right-of-way was acquired from this parcel. Staff is recommending approval because the variance does meet the three-part test.
Okay. Very good. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I have a question. This project, or this sign specifically, in relation to some of the conversations that came up with the Bobby and Steve's sign, I know there were some, I tried to pull my files and I couldn't do it in time. What were the conversations that came up? Because I know there were some with that Bobby and Steve's sign that we approved, like maybe three, three and a half years ago. Were there any differences or similarities with this and the Bobby and Steve's sign? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I apologize if I do not know that off the top of my head. That's certainly something that I can take a look at and forward that information on to you.
I remember a little bit about that, and it seems to me that the Bobby and Steve's sign wasn't due to right-of-way issues. It was more due to the placement of the sign and it just being a tight corner and a very tight location. But I think we have had similar issues, not necessarily with signs, but certainly with variances on parking setback and things like that, where the development or the redevelopment of a road and adjustment of the right-of-way has caused, has put a, an issue into, into non-compliance. And this one, to me, seems like, now speaking my opinion and not background, but seems like a relatively straightforward compromise to the city having to take right-of-way from this parcel.
Yeah, and if I remember right, too, there were some banners that I think the city had put up in that corner, which was impeding from the view of their sign for the Bobby and Steve.
Right. And we adjusted that sign and had a...
Yeah.
Like a four, four or five-foot setback or something.
And they had a water feature, still do have a water feature. I can't remember if that was part of it or not, but...
Yeah, I think they couldn't, they would have had to do away with the water feature if they were to meet the setback.
Yeah.
And I know that, or what I can recall was that there just seems like there was a lot of sign with, a lot of signs in one little area with the Bobby and Steve's, and so we were using the variance tool to be able to accommodate all the interests in the area. And I mean, this, if there's any definition of variance, this would be it, because, you know, it's a plight that was not done by the project proponent themselves. So I just didn't know if there were any similarities, and I was trying to brush the cobwebs off in my head on the three and a half years back, or whatever it was with the Bobby and Steve's, so, yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, is there anybody else that has any comments or concerns? Seeing this is a public hearing, is there anyone out in the audience that has any questions or comments regarding this specific project? So now would be the time? Okay. Commissioners, if I see anything. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the final order 214-03.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. You move forward with your project. Thank you very much. Moving on to variance number 2014-04, this has been requested that we continue it to the July 28th, 2014 meeting. Julie, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is correct. The applicant wishes to continue the public hearing in order to further research their options.
Do you need any other actions from this council tonight, then, for that?
Mr. Chair, nothing other than a motion to...
Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to recommend continuance to the July 24th, oh, 28th meeting on July 24th.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Moving on. Motion wins. The next one is Eagle Heights East. Again, this is a little bit different. It's a little bit different from the letter transmittal than it is on the actual agenda for tonight. Subject is Eagle Heights East. Location is southwest corner of Pioneer Trail and Eden Prairie Road. The request is a zoning district change from R1-22 to R1-13.5 on 1.7 acres and a preliminary plat on 1.7 acres into four lots. With that being said, making sure everyone's on the right page with me. Looks like we are. Can the proponent of the project please come forward? Please state your name, spell your last name for city record, and tell us a little bit about your project. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Stu Stender, S-T-E-N-D-E-R. Stewart Land Partners, the applicant on this matter. We, in brief, we purchased two lots late last year with the intent of subdividing them hopefully into four lots, consistent with the neighborhood directly adjacent to these lots. So they'll be consistent in terms of size and feel to those lots. Over the last few months, we've worked with city staff to accommodate a potential future subdivision of some land to the east of our property, which we do not own. So if and when that property gets purchased down the road and subdivided, our development will accommodate that. We've also worked with city staff on various ponding issues, which we've accommodated, and with that, I'll take any questions if there are any.
You know, we'll go to city staff. If we have any questions, we'll come back to you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a staff report, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, city staff does recommend approval. The rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and all of the lots that are proposed meet the zoning ordinance requirements.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns about this specific project?
I do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Have we opened it up for a public comment yet?
Uh, we haven't yet.
I can, I'll refrain until after.
Okay, I can open up. Is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns about this specific project? So now would be the time to come forward? Okay, not seeing any?
All right, I'll take the floor, then.
There you go.
This question is for engineering and planning. There's a rainwater garden in the southwest corner, and the proximity, I see that there's, you know, I'm assuming that that's a stormwater connection between the existing pond that's south of the property and the rainwater garden itself. Curious to know if there had been any discussions, or if there any thought as to the feasibility of, necessity of a rainwater garden in such close proximity with the grade differential only being from 877 to 879, a grade differential of only two feet. It seems like an awful lot of intrusion upon a parcel of land, one lot, just for a rainwater garden, if there had any been considerations for utilizing the existing pondage, if that had been designed to be able to take care and mitigate the storm sewer system in the area with the future development opportunities, or what your thoughts are on that?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, this, the existing pond, I believe, was, or it is sized to accommodate the drainage of this area, but at the time that that was done, the infiltration requirements were not part of it. So as any new development comes in, they have to provide infiltration in addition to the stormwater treatment. So, um, so this, the rain garden that's shown here is for that, those four lots, and then...
So the rainwater garden is by the letter of the, of the new infiltration ordinance that, that went into effect?
Yes.
After, after the development? Well, I see that there's no ponds on this, so we're utilizing something that's already in existence. I just didn't know if, you know, the size or the scope or the necessity of the infiltration basin, or if there had been any conversation of a waiver against that, just because of the, I mean, the sheer proximity of this pond that's already in here. I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers, but just didn't know if that conversation...
There's, there's several things you have to do. There's rate control, there's infiltration requirements, as well as volume control, water quality type stuff. So the existing pond will cover two of those, but not the third.
Okay.
The infiltration requirement is still required.
That takes care of it. Thank you.
Good questions. Mr. Stender, can you come forward, please? I just have a quick question for you. On the plan specifically, it talks about these two lots. Are those the lots that you're referring to that are for future expansion?
Oh, the two lots we purchased are being subdivided into four. Those are the two I mentioned.
Right, and then there's two other ones, I think, ended that cul-de-sac?
And at the east end of that proposed cul-de-sac.
Correct, and those were the ones that you were talking about that would be the future.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. That's all I needed. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Okay. Julie, do you have any? Okay, just checking. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair, move to recommend approval of the zoning district change from R122 to R113.5 on 1.7 acres and prelim plat on 1.7 acres.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. You move forward with your project. Thank you very much. Last item for this portion of the agenda, the subject is the telecommunications Verizon light pole tower exchange at Eden Prairie High School. The location against Eden Prairie High School, the exact address is 17185 Valley View Road in Eden Prairie. The request is a site plan review on 66.55 acres for the review of a telecommunications tower greater than 80 feet in height. With that being said, will the proponent of the project please come forward? As always, state your, state your name, spell your last name for city records, and tell us about your project, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Paul Harrington, H-A-R-R-I-N-G-T-O-N, authorized representative for site acquisition and real estate development for Verizon Wireless. The project in front of you is, as summarized in the staff report, the replacement of an existing light standard at the Eden Prairie High School football stadium. The existing light standard is 100 feet in height. We are proposing to put in a 116-foot monopole structure, similar to what is there, the 100-foot structure, along with a three-foot lightning rod for lightning protection on top of that tower. An antenna array will be placed on the top of that tower, with the antennas not extending above the 116-foot level. Photo simulations of those, that installation have been included in your information that we submitted. Ground processing equipment necessary for the operation of the system will be located in a custom-built structure underneath the bleachers of the stadium on the southwest side, which is the home side of the football stadium. Other than that, we, we look for your support of the project. Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Appreciate it.
With that being said, staff report, please, Julie. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as the proponent stated, they are seeking approval of a site plan review to accommodate the replacement of a light pole to accommodate telecommunications tower. Staff is recommending approval if it is compliant with city code.
Thank you very much. City commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns?
I do have one. I'm nitpicking, Julie. On the orange sheet, it's six, it's 67.33 acres, and it's probably just a typo, but on the staff report, it's 67 point, or 66.55 acres.
Good catch.
So we've got a discrepancy there. Just want to make sure we got the right one to read into the motion.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff will clarify that, so it's correct prior to city council review.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question for staff, if I may.
Yes, please, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, there's a sheet here that's got an aerial overlay of the track, close to the end, and it labels an existing T-Mobile monopole. What is the height of that T-Mobile monopole up in the, if I have my directions right here, up in the northeastern side?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my recollection is that T-Mobile tower also went through this exact same process, just a couple of years ago, when, when it was put in place, and I believe it is approximately 120 feet in height as well.
And this one will be 119 feet overall. Okay.
Mr. Chair, that's correct.
I have another, just out of curiosity, who came up with the term of whatchamacallit for this thing? More or less, you don't, you don't actually have to. It's just an observation. I was reading through the material. I was like, whatchamacallit.
All of the, all, what we return, term as searchering, which is areas we look for facilities in, are named by radio frequency engineers, and we always joke that we don't think they get out of the office enough, which is kind of their little attempt to kind of get it a little, bring a little sunshin' to it.
Actually, I think we appreciate it. Some good Saturday morning reading.
Mr. Harrington, I do have one question for you, if you wouldn't mind saying. I noticed there's a ventilation system coming out of that building. Are you just mainly ventilating heat? And I guess my question would be with, with participants or whatnot, people sitting on the stands, is there anything that's going to radiate up? I'm sure they'll like it in cold season, but other than that...
Yeah, we, we actually discussed that with the facilities director of Eden Prairie High Schools, as well as the head football coach, athletic director when we were there. There's an onsite generator that, that, in the event there's a power outage that would last in excess of eight hours, there's battery backup to deal with anything under eight hours.
So is the UPS inside it?
Yes. So we are, it will vent the exhaust out of that. We're putting in a squirrel cage, if you're familiar with that, so it kind of directs the, directs the exhaust downward, and we're, we do that in these situations.
So there's no possibility of any of that exhaust thing coming up through the stands, then?
No.
What is your generator? Is it inside the building?
It's inside the building.
It is. Is it LP or is it...
It's diesel.
It is diesel. Okay.
And that's only in the case of a more than eight-hour... More than eight-hour. We have an eight-hour, eight-hour battery backup. The likelihood of that actually happening is... Yeah. We do cycle it. We do cycle it once a month, just so it's operational. It's about 20 minutes, and we do have a lease agreement that's been fully negotiated with the school district. They approved it in April, and we have specific times where we can cycle that because of the school, so...
And you get, I know this is probably getting a little tech, do you get warnings then that UPS goes off, that you would know that the generator's on?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yeah. We have a, what we call a NAC, a national operating center that, that deals with that, so they'll get a notification.
Right. Okay. Very good. That was my question.
Mr. Chair, question. I'm not sure who to direct this at. Is it typical to build two of these this close to each other, or other sites like that, or...
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it is not uncommon to have two different providers having service this, in this close of proximity to one another.
They're typically located as schools, or...
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, telecommunications providers will look to co-locate on any existing structure of height in order to get the reception that they need. It is not uncommon to be at a school district site, or church steeple, or any other structure that provides them the height.
I think it also just keeps the cost down. Yes, please, go ahead.
Might be helpful. We did look at the possibility of locating on the T-Mobile tower. The school district didn't want us to do that. If you look at the aerial, they have a lot of track activities that go on, on that side of the, of the field, and the stands on that side of the field didn't allow us for us to build it underneath the stands, so that's kind of why we arrived on the south side of the field. We, we do try and co-locate on existing towers. It saves us money if we can, but in this particular case, we couldn't. The other thing that kind of drives us when we do our searches, obviously zoning, and the code directs us to institutional properties and public property, so I know there's been a lot of attempts to go on the park just to the south of the school, but that's, hasn't gone with the city too well, so the school is kind of in the natural fallback in that area, so... Thank you. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, please.
It's been a while since I've been at, attended the high school, but I remember that the bleachers were open in the back, and I'm, with the addition of this underneath, what are the, I don't know who wants to take it, but are there safety measures and fencing and stuff like that that's going to be in place to keep, so I'm not sure if students still hang out under the bleachers. I don't know why they would, but, you know.
We're dating ourselves. You know, there's a...
We know where you were, Travis.
There's a chain, there's a chain link fence currently in place that precludes anyone from going under the, under the bleachers. We're going inside of that, so that chain link fence is going to be maintained, so our building will be inside that, so there's no access. We will cut in a man, like a man gate going into it, but that's it, just so we can get in there, and then our building is locked as well, so it should take care of that issue.
Okay. Yeah, I had a suggestion to paint well on top, because I'm assuming that there's going to be a lot of cheese dogs and other stuff that's going to be falling through those bleachers and...
Probably going to go with a metal roof.
You know, that does bring up a question, Mr. Harrington, I have for you, when you talk about stuff falling. I know with television towers and whatnot, you'll have stuff that sits over the building to keep ice or whatever falling. Is there any potential, where is that in location to the monopole itself compared to where the bystanders will be sitting? Is there any...
Well, it's removed, it's, it's backed from the bystanders, because the, the towers themselves are outside the, the stand structure.
Okay.
So the falls on, so the ice falls on you. You're correct. We do typically take that into consideration. When we build our structures, we'll put like an ice shield on top of our structure that's right next to it, but in this case, there shouldn't be a problem with that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I have a question, please. Regarding the additional, the possibility of an additional user at 80 feet, my question is, what, you know, with them requiring an additional equipment, would that as well fit in that area?
Well, we, we are designing for two co-locators. We talked, talked to the school about that. That's obviously up to the school district, if they want to lease to another, another user. But there is more space underneath the stands if somebody were to locate. We talked about that, because we've got kind of our choice of where to go under there. But they did want to kind of protect some areas. They store some things under there, the hurdles and those types of things, like during the, during the track season, they'll put under there, but we're away from that. But there's, there's an opportunity underneath the stands for another user to put their equipment, so...
Thank you. So that is up to the school to decide if it'd be the lease source?
The lease agreement we have with the school is simply for our, our building and the monopole. If anyone is to locate on it, we, we control them being on the tower. The school district controls the ground space for their equipment.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Believe I opened this up to the audience, but just in case, is there anyone out in the audience that has any comments or concerns about this project? Not seeing any, not seeing any follow-up questions from commissioners or city staff, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll move to recommend approval of site plan review on 67.33 acres for the telecommunications tower.
Second.
If we can also have a follow-up, Julie, on the specific, I guess, a...